This meeting will now come to order. Good evening and welcome to the Peoria City Council Special Meeting of September 19th, 2017. We have one item on the consent agenda, and that is authorization to hold an executive session. I've received no requests for removal from the council. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Council please vote.
There it goes. I still need four more. Councilmember Patana.
And the consent agenda passes unanimously. We will now adjourn to executive session.
This meeting will now come to order. The clerk will please call the roll.
Mayor Carlet.
Here.
Vice Mayor Edwards.
Here.
Councilmember Patanna.
Here.
Councilmember Binsbacher.
Here.
Councilmember Finn.
Here.
Councilmember Hunt.
Here.
Councilmember Leoni.
Here.
Council Liaison Acosta.
Here.
And Council Liaison Getrost.
Here. Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the City Council's special meeting of September 19, 2017. We have one item on our study session agenda this evening, and that is the Sign Code Update Zoning Ordinance Text Amendment. Mr. Tyne?
Great. Thank you, Mayor. And just a quick reminder, this is a study session to update you on the process of updating our sign code and our sign code modernization project. As you recall, due to recent Supreme Court decisions that have been brought down, and also just that this has not been updated for a while, we were very eager to have discussions and communication with all of you with regard to our sign code and looking at this much more comprehensively. So again, this is an informational item only. We wanted to provide you an update. Staff is just doing an outstanding job in really looking across the board at what are best practices and what would be best for Peoria and wanted to provide you an update. So with us, we of course have Chris Hockes, our Planning and Community Development Director, and with him Melissa Sigmund from Planning and Community Development, and also Jay Davies from the Police Department. Should there be any questions with regard to our enforcement? And with that, I'll pass it over to Chris.
Thank you.
Great. Well, thanks, Jeff, and good evening, Mayor and Council. We're pleased to be back in front of you to discuss what we believe to be a near-final draft of the sign code. It's been over, I don't know, a year and a half that we've been involved with the sign code, and Melissa on my right, she's been, you know, neck-deep in sign standards and all over the place, so we're happy to be in front of you tonight. So what we're going to do in terms of the agenda is I'll provide just a few introductory remarks, then I'll pass over to Melissa, and what she's going to do is go through some of the highlights of some of the probably the more interesting aspects of the sign code we think you might have questions on. And then finally, at the very end, Jay's going to provide a perspective on forcibility as it relates to the signed ordinance. So in your agenda, what we've done in your packet is we've provided you not only a full copy of the signed ordinance as it exists today, we've also provided you what we'll call Cliff Notes version of some of the highlights of the sign code, as well as a radish sheet. So these are comments we've received during the public review process and how we've looked at those comments and made refinements to the sign code. So that's in your packet as well. So what we'll do today is, as Jeff indicated, this is a study session. We're intending to provide information, but we're certainly looking to get feedback and input from you. To the extent we need to make some refinements to the code, there's certainly time to do that, okay? What I'd also like to do is quickly recognize the project team, of course, Melissa Sigmund, who's been the project manager. She's been fantastic on the sign code, as well as Lori Dever in her shop, who's been responsible for a lot of the graphics and the line work that you've seen in the code. We formed an internal working group early in the process that included not only representatives from the Police and Code Enforcement Department, the City Attorney's Office, but also engineering and some help from our planning staff here as well. Okay, so the sign ordinance we're talking about, again, is a complete update to the sign code portion of the zoning ordinance. And when we started with this, there were two base goals. We've talked in previous study sessions about the Reed versus Town of Gilbert US Supreme Court decision. It had a dramatic impact on sign codes across the country, so of course, one goal is to comply with the Supreme Court decision. But another goal is it's an opportunity for us to modernize our sign code. We have a sign code that hasn't had comprehensive revisions for some time, or a few decades, rather. So as we approach the sign code, there were a couple of interests that were important to us. One is to foster a sign code, foster a business environment that allows businesses to appropriately advertise their wares and services, but also to strike an appropriate balance so that we continue to protect the community aesthetic environment that attracts people to the city of Peoria. So we're trying to find that balance. And then finally, as we'll talk in a minute, it's important to develop a sign code that's easy to use, that's simple, something the staff can find information quickly, the public, the business community. So we tried to increase the usability of that, and I think we've accomplished that. So quickly, with the current sign code, as I indicated, it's been about two decades since we've had comprehensive changes. We had a sign code that was dense in text. We had some standards that were in one section, other standards in different sections. Not very easy to get through. It's 48 pages, a lot of sign types, so of course, one of our objectives was to try to simplify that. And I talked recently about the Reed versus Town of Gilbert decision. A lot of nuances to that Supreme Court decision, but if we boiled it down to it, it's basically that our sign code has to be content-neutral, meaning that as we devise sign type requirements, they can't be on the basis of what the sign says or what the message of the sign is. We can still have appropriate regulatory considerations as we delineate sign types. They can be things like, is it a commercial property? Is it a residential property? Is it a temporary or permanent sign? The physical makeup of the sign and those types of aspects. In our approach, I mentioned trying to make the sign code more usable. We've reduced the text number of sign types. You can see on the screen, this is an example of a table that we've provided in our code that you can easily find information, whether it's the requirements or whether you need a permit. So we think, you know, a picture's worth a thousand words, and so made it a lot more usable for the customer. In terms of our public outreach, just a few words about that. When we first started the process, what we did was we gathered all the permit activity that we had over a period of time, and we tried to identify whether it was a sign contractor, developer, or the applicant. And we tried to compile a list of all those interests. I think as we compiled them, there was a lot of duplicate names, but we tried to get all those contacts together. But we also supplemented that list with industry representatives. They included representatives from WEMAR, the West Valley Association of Realtors, the Home Builders Association, Valley Partnership, Arizona Sign Association, International Sign Association, and others. And so through that process, not only did we have two stakeholder group meetings, but we also met with individually with some of those sign interests to try to understand their perspectives and maybe some of their concerns with that. We also maintained a website where we'd have all our information about the evolution of the sign code in terms of also comments we had received and how we intended to address that. So that was all part of that outreach process. I think one thing to note before I push over to Melissa is reflecting on our earlier goal of trying to comply with the decision of the Supreme Court, but also build a more code that's concise and usable. A couple of things to point out there. I actually love this graphic. If you think about the number of words, we have 18,000 words today, sign code. We've boiled it down to 6,000 words, so we've reduced it by thirds. Also, the number of pages, 48 down to 20. The sign types were reduced to 33 to 29, and then we've identified that for some of the more innocuous types of sign types, we've determined the permit's not necessary. So there's 13 sign types that you actually don't need a permit for. So we've tried to not only make the code more usable, but also increase the flexibility and usability of the code. So what I'll do is turn it over to Melissa, and she's going to go through some of the highlights.
Thanks, Chris. Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So as Chris noted, we will be going through just the highlights, some of the key sign types that we believe would be of interest. So there are certainly other sign types that are not described. It is not comprehensive, and you may find that there are questions, you know, what about this? It is likely covered in one of our other sign types, but these are just some of the main ones of interest. So starting with sign types, before jumping into the individual signs, as Chris mentioned, we have many illustrations. However, all of our signs are regulations are message neutral, so that both the photos and illustrations are just examples of how a sign may be used. It's not a requirement. In addition, we can, while we cannot regulate based on message, we can differentiate between commercial and non-commercial signs. So you will see some regulations that do differentiate between those types of uses. So the first type of temporary signs that we'll discuss are political signs. This is a sign type that we currently have. According to the ARS, the Arizona v. statutes, it does require that the cities allow political signs to be in the right-of-way for a period at least 60 days before the primary election until 15 days after the general election. City Council had previously decided to extend this time to 90 days prior to the primary election. That was several years back when ARS rules changed. What we're proposing is to continue that same timeframe that was previously adopted. However, since we cannot consider content, all non-commercial messages must be allowed in the right-of-way during this time. So that would be a change from our current regulations. This does exclude the Sports Complex Commercial Tourism Zone, which was previously adopted by council, which is essentially ARS allows a zone of exclusion within the right-of-way so that there would not be political signs in that right-of-way area during the specified time period. So again, this would not apply to the signs that say, you know, cheap mattresses or real estate investor looking for a trainee. It is for non-commercial messages. They could be ideological messages, so as you see here, it may be save water, save the whales, I like Ike. All of those messages are equally allowable. The second type of signs to discuss would be resident right-of-way signs. This is not a sign type that we currently have, however, it's most closely related to our temporary event signs. So what we were seeking to do here is create a sign type that would allow for those types of messages that are common in residential areas so that our residents expect to be able to display off of their property within the right-of-way in a reasonable manner. So this may be for yard sales, things like open houses, if you're having a large party and are trying to direct folks into your neighborhood. Any of those type of messages may be what the sign could be used for. But regardless of the message, the timing would be proposed to be four times a year, up to four signs, and up to four days per instance. So this would, like I said, account for those typical uses common in residential areas. It would only be allowed on residential roads, so those are roads that are adjacent to residentially zoned property. So this would not be in front of a commercial center or in a commercial area. It would have to be adjacent to residential uses. And right now, it's fairly similar in terms of the number of signs that would be allowed based on our temporary event signage.
I have a question for you. So a sign like this, would it be allowed to be put up on a telephone pole? Because since that's not their property, because you see a lot of them, the temporary signs up over the weekend, and then come Sunday afternoon, those signs are still there. Come Tuesday afternoon, those signs are still there. What's the parameters as to where those signs can be placed?
Vice Mayor Edwards, that's a great question. They would not. Those signs would not be allowed to be placed on items such as utility poles, city facilities of that nature, landscape rocks, et cetera. So there are limitations in terms of the placement as well as the duration. So now that we've addressed the off-site signs for residential areas, yard signs are another common sign type. We do not have a current equivalent that covers all of the signs that you'd find in front of a house in their yard, so the yard sign is meant to encompass all of those typical things happening in the front of someone's developed residential property, whether you're having landscaping work done, a pool installed, having a birthday party, or any other type of short-duration, small sign that would be normal in a residential area. We would propose to allow this for up to three months at a time to ensure that because the signs are temporary in nature, that they aren't out there getting weathered, three feet in height, three square feet in area, so a very small sign that could be placed in the front yard at any season of the year. Undeveloped property signs are for those large, or for undeveloped properties, both large and small. The regulations you see here are specific to properties larger than one acre. We have smaller allowances for properties under an acre. We would expect that this would accommodate the equivalent of off-site subdivision advertising, which is typically used by home builders to direct folks to their new neighborhoods. So what we're proposing is that these signs would be allowed for up to one year and renewed twice for a total of three years. With the off-site subdivision advertising signs, those are right now limited based on the subdivision. So if you have up to, you can have multiple builders in a subdivision. If there are more than two builders, someone is left out and is not able to have an off-site subdivision sign. Because the new signage is based on vacant property ownership, the builder would have the ability to go out and find the undeveloped property owner and negotiate with them to have a sign. They would not be limited by the fact that they have multiple builders within one subdivision. So this really creates more flexibility, both for the individuals wanting to place signs, as well as creating rights for the undeveloped vacant property owners. One issue that we currently see is that the minimum separation distance between these signs, there is not one, and based on that, there is quite a bit of clustering and perhaps oversaturation in certain areas. So we are proposing a minimum separation of 100 feet from other signs of this type to create just a little bit of separation so that they can be well visible and not extremely close together. The height and area would be similar to our current size.
Can you talk to me a little bit about the stakeholder meetings that you had, especially in this regard? There's a lot of these kinds of signs out there.
Sure. Mayor Carlat. Our stakeholder meetings did not, we did not see significant interest in these with the stakeholder groups. However, the individuals attending the stakeholder meetings may not have had this type of signage at the top of mind, just based on their personal interest in the industry.
These are developer signs, is that correct?
These would be, these could be the off-site subdivision advertising signs for a home builder, yes. Now, one thing we heard is that the home builders do like to have sign options, and this does create an allowance for them. We did not hear anything specific from the Home Builders Association regarding the particular regulations in terms of the requirements. However, in general, they described being agreeable to what we were proposing.
The Home Builders Association?
Right. And Mayor Carlat, we did meet with the representative of that group individually, and he had gone through the sign code, and we talked about different things that were of interest to him. I don't know that that piece came up specifically, but there were other ones that did.
Okay, so they're good, huh? All right. If they're good, I'm good.
A-frame signs are a type of sign that is not currently allowed on a consistent basis within the city. Right now, what we have is an allowance for special event signage, which can occur four times per year for up to 30 days. We are proposing to continue that. However, in addition, we understand that many businesses, particularly small businesses, have a need to have additional signage outside on a daily basis. So what we're suggesting is having an additional allowance for an A-frame sign within eight feet of the business entry wall, so close to the business, perhaps near the sidewalk, and allowing them to have things like perhaps their daily specials, other advertising, so a small sign every day that they're open for business. So just another little allowance that we heard was of interest to the business community.
Does this include the flag signs, first of all, the flag signs?
Councilmember Hunt, the special event signage, which would be now called special promotion, would allow that. So on a limited basis, the four times per year, 30 days at a time, the new allowance would only affect the A-frame signs and create another additional allowance. So the flags would still only be limited to the four times per year for 30 days. So stationary vehicle signs are something that's currently prohibited. However, the changes that we're proposing deal with the exceptions. So right now, we prohibit portable signs, including vehicle signs, basically a sign that is on a vehicle or a vehicle that is only a sign. The exception right now is for business vehicles. However, we found that this regulation doesn't really cover the, or doesn't allow for enforcement of those problematic occurrences, such as the image you see on the top, which is a vehicle that's been parked for multiple years, is not used for, as a vehicle, and it's simply a stationary sign. What we're proposing is that the exceptions allow for vehicles consistently used in the normal daily course of business. If you have a delivery vehicle, a vehicle that's driven for business purposes or driven around town, basically a vehicle that's being driven, not something that is only a sign. The limitations that we're proposing are attempting to keep these vehicles farther away from the right-of-way, again, to encourage their use as vehicles and not as signage, also understanding that all of our commercial centers have different sizes so that a precise distance away from the right-of-way may not be practical. So that's why we've used words such as the feasibility, it's feasible, how far away from the right-of-way it's feasible for that particular site. The goal is really, as I said, just to ensure that we're having these vehicles used as Moving on to permanent signs, we've made some changes to the format of our signage allowances. What we've created is a bucket of signage for both our wall signs and awning signs so that businesses can choose, kind of pick and choose, the amount that they use of each based on their business needs and their location, their site, et cetera. So this allows more flexibility. In addition, we've also had a slight bump up in the amount of this signage that's allowed from 1.5 square feet to two. So you're looking at potentially a 30% increase for some, depending on how large their signs are. So just a little bit more signage. In addition, flexibility to placement. So some of the images you see here with the signs that are placed above an awning or canopy, on the edge of the canopy, are something that we wanted to concretely allow and encourage some of these more creative placements. In addition, we've also created allowances in the code so that a property owner could determine that they would like to have all of the signage for their building divvied up as they would like. So instead of saying that all of the signage has to be placed right in front of each tenant, if that's not logical, if all of the traffic is over here on the street, they would have the discretion to divvy that signage up as they would like with a minimum allowance of 20 square feet per tenant. So every tenant gets some signage, but it's not so rigid as to say that we know where the signage should be placed. So if it makes more sense for them to place it on the side of the building or the back of the building, they would have that ability. So we're giving them some of the ownership over how best to advertise for their business Projecting signs are a new sign type for the city. These are signs that extend more than 14 inches away from the building and are typically perpendicular to the building face. So you can see some examples. What we are suggesting is these are often very pedestrian-friendly signs, and they can be very appropriate in areas where we want to encourage pedestrian interaction, and they create some interesting architectural features as well. So with that, in order to create safety, we are proposing that they're at least eight feet above the sidewalk and 12 square foot in area so that these are not huge signs, but just add a little bit more interest. And again, it's something that is a creative placement that can attract attention. Our freestanding monument signs are currently pretty much a one-size-fits-all proposal. With that, aside for a few exceptions, for Grand Avenue and Bell Road, really, everyone gets the same monument sign. However, we know that our commercial and non-residential centers are not one-size-fits-all. We have some that are very, very large, some that are smaller, some that are on our parkways with very high-speed roads and very high, very, you know, wide, high-traffic situations. With that, we are proposing a hierarchy of monument signs so that everyone has some type of signage that's permitted, but those larger commercial centers that have more frontage and that have higher-speed roadways get additional, both height as well as area. So you can see that the sizes in general have gone up slightly to account for that, as well as created some larger areas. We've used our existing planary development zoning districts as comparison tools. So we have some of those areas that have addressed larger commercial centers, and we've seen that those have worked in practice. We also compared to on-the-ground developments to see how much signage this would provide to come up with something that works a little bit better in our regular code instead of having to just rely on our PAD zoning. Freeway signs are something that we are loosening the regulations on just a little bit as well. So we're having slightly taller, larger signs, again, consistent with our planary developments, and also reducing the frontage requirements. Right now, you have to have essentially a quarter mile of freeway frontage to have a freeway sign. And the way that our parcels are developed along the freeway, many are narrower than that, and they don't have a quarter mile. So what we're suggesting is that maybe the 660 feet, so about half that distance, still about two blocks of frontage, would gain the right to have a freeway sign. So some of those parcels that are still very large, but just not quite a quarter mile in frontage, would have the ability to now place a freeway sign and gain that visibility. Aside from that, they're very similar. The height is, again, what we've used for some of our planned area developments, so it's similar to the size of signs you'd see out there today. So the next steps is, as you can see, we've already had both a study session with our Planning and Zoning Commission, and we're here tonight to get feedback from you. Depending on the feedback, we are prepared to go forward to Planning and Zoning Commission for the October 5th meeting, and then come back to you on October 17th for decision on this. Now, obviously, this is a major overhaul, but the zoning ordinance is not static, so we would expect that once this code was adopted in whatever form it takes, that we would still be coming back before you in the future to make those minor tweaks along the way. However, this major formatting change really gives us a good basis as a jumping-off point so that in future, we can just make tweaks and we don't have to do quite as extensive of a change. So based on your feedback, as I said, we could be proceeding in October. With that, the ordinance could be effective as soon as November, so before the beginning of the year, folks could have a new code in place to use. With that, I take any questions you may have.
Jay, turn your slide, I'm sorry.
Sorry there.
Thank you, Melissa. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just real briefly, wanted to cover a couple pieces with respect to code enforcement. From a code enforcement standpoint, we're very pleased with the proposed ordinance, pleased that we were involved in helping to develop this in some small way, and pleased, you know, Chris covered the reductions in the volume of the ordinance, and that really resonates with us. This has been as complicated for us as I think anybody to sort through as we're dealing with enforcement items. Real quickly, in terms of our process for dealing with signs, it's really the same as residential. I know you're all familiar with that. There's an education process upfront, a notice. Enforcement or through a citation would be a last resort, but it is on the table. We are able to civilly cite businesses in this regard if it comes to that. We, with respect to the impact of the Reed decision, you, if you have sensed that things have changed in the last couple of years with respect to sign enforcement, it's not your imagination. We, in consultation with the city attorney at the time, with the impact of the Reed decision, we had to adjust our enforcement. That decision, as has been noted, really took the ability to look at the content of a sign and make enforcement decisions on the content of the sign, and our direction from a legal standpoint was to be more methodical and really take a less proactive approach, deal with the more egregious sign cases, and if we are going to take enforcement action, to consult with the city attorney to make sure that, you know, we're not getting sideways with that Reed decision. The impact of that has been, prior to the Reed decision, about 6.5% of our cases on an annual basis involve some sort of sign violation. Since the Reed decision and up until, you know, we move forward with whatever form this takes, that has been closer to 4% of our cases have been signed. So there has been a measurable impact, a slowdown. So that hasn't been your imagination. That's been by design as the ordinance has been evolving and complying with that decision. And then lastly, I want to talk a little bit about bandit signs, and they come up, came up briefly. There are those loose, you know, 30 pounds, 30 days, $30, buy my mattress, I want to buy your house, all of those types of signs. Those are, those are difficult. I think when you look around the valley or the country, most jurisdictions struggle with these types of signs. In reality, if you picture those signs, there's usually a brief message and a phone number. And in today's phone number world, that typically means a mobile phone number, which makes it very difficult for us to track down who is really behind that sign and take any sort of meaningful enforcement action. any sort of meaningful enforcement action. So our approach has been simply to confiscate the signs. And we do that with a frequency that might surprise you. We confiscate about 325 of these signs a month on average. We're very heavily engaged in that, and what we've learned and what I'm sure your observations show is, there's a very large industry of, I don't know if they're gnomes or elves, but they go out and put them right back up. They're very, those businesses are driven by that type of low-level, inexpensive advertising, and it's a never-ending battle. But we keep close tally of the signs we're collecting, and as I said, it averages over 300 a month, and we're not going to give up, we're going to keep working on that. So with that, we'll take any questions.
Council? Councilmember Patenna.
Thank you, Mayor. Would you be able to go back several slides to, I think, undeveloped land? Yes. So my question is, let's say this sign here, Ryan Holmes, you're saying you're only allowing two signs per recorded subdivision. So if Ryan Holmes comes out and puts two signs up, if Jones Housing comes out, they can't put signs up in that particular area, is that correct?
Councilmember Patenna, that's correct. As of today, the current sign code limits it based on the subdivision. In the future, that would not be the case.
Okay. So if Jones Holmes wanted to put a sign up on his own property where he's building a home, could he do that?
Yes, that would be a different sign type. We do have an allowance for those onsite, on-property signs for homes that are developments that are in process. So the new subdivisions are allowed signage within their property as a separate sign type.
Okay. You know, sadly, I am very familiar with the previous sign code, and I used it a lot in code enforcement, and it was many times very confusing and hard to interpret. And because of that, you know, we used to kind of not be able to understand what to do with a particular violation. I read this one over very carefully, and it seems like the clarity of this now gives you some teeth in this sign code. And I think it's also eased some restrictions that will benefit businesses, so it certainly is easier to read and understand. So thank you for all your hard work on that. I think this will be a great tool for you to use. Thank you.
Councilmember Leonie.
Yeah, let's ask a question about these cardboard signs. What about them? I mean, is it legal? I mean, do they have to pick them up? Is code supposed to be allowed to pick them up? What's going on? Because you get, like, house for sale, or yard sale, stuff like that. So I'm just kind of curious, because once in a while I get a phone call, and they'll say, what's all these signs doing running up and down Olive and Peoria and Northern? So what do we do about those?
Councilmember Leonie, it sounds like you're talking possibly about two different signs, bandit signs, which tend to have a commercial message, and then some of the residential signs, yard sales, things of that nature. They are treated differently. Under the proposed ordinance, the homeowner signs for yard sales, parties, things of that nature, there would be an allowance that mirrors the garage sale ordinance. You can have up to four garage sales a year, you could have up to four sign windows of time where you could put signs out. So they would become legal under the current ordinance. Bandit signs aren't legal now, they wouldn't be legal under the proposed ordinance.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Council Liaison Acosta.
Okay. So I have a question. The yard sale signs, there's a restriction to where you can post them, right?
There are restrictions in terms of safety, so they can be placed in the right-of-way, but they couldn't be placed, for instance, in the median, in the middle of a road, or very close to the intersection where they may block someone trying to make a turn from seeing traffic. So there are still limitations, but they are just general for safety purposes.
I'm referring more to, like, how close it is to the residency, like, isn't there, I thought you mentioned something about being in a certain area.
There would not be a particular limitation. They actually have to be, they have to be in the residential area. So I think what you may have heard discussed is some of the bandit signs, that are those commercially oriented or kind of business signs. Those we generally see in our commercial areas. So the signs that we are permitting through the resident right-of-way have to stay in the residential area. Because they're for residential purposes, they can't be in the commercial district. So the goal is to have them serve the function of the neighborhood signage and not be creeping into commercial areas where the messages might change.
Okay. And I just wanted to ask about, like, if you have, like, a lost dog sign or something like that, if there was restrictions with that too, that you had to keep it within a certain limit?
And the sign code isn't intended to cover every instance of signage that may be allowed. However, someone certainly could put a lost dog message on one of those resident right-of-way signs. And in general, the way that the sign code works is it's intending to capture those sign types that would be visible off of someone's property. So if someone were to post one, you know, on the local community message board, we're not trying to regulate that type of, you know, aspect of messaging, but just to capture those more, the larger sign types that are more problematic potentially or that there are more safety issues related to them.
Okay. All right, thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Question about yard signs, how does that play in with, you have a HOA that limits the number of, because they have community garage sales, and they're limited to two a year where the HOA puts out, you know, large signs. Does that play into this at all, where now these residents can have their own garage sale without having to abide by HOA rules?
Vice Mayor Edwards, this would not change any HOA regulations. HOA could still be more restrictive than the city code. And while we expect that they may be used for items such as yard sales, we certainly aren't limiting that message. So they would still need to follow their HOA rules. This just provides an avenue for that in the future.
Okay, thank you.
So I know that WEAR was, they had their hand in a lot of the sign code here. So they sent even recently a large list of things that they were concerned about and things that may have already been addressed. So I guess I would just like you to speak to those a little bit, yeah, speak to that, and tell me if everybody got on the same page.
Mayor Carlott, we did receive the list of concerns from WEAR. Some of them were items that I think are simply maybe misunderstandings or things that can be clarified in terms of, you know, their reading of the regulation versus the intent. Others may be based on their group's personal goals and objectives versus the needs of the city as a whole. So what we were trying to look at is balancing the needs of both businesses, residents, and all of the users within the city. So their concerns are certainly relevant for their group and bring up some of the issues that they experience, and we had to temper that with perhaps some of the competing interests. So particularly with the open house signs, I believe they expressed an interest in having far more of those, essentially the resident right-of-way signs. And we had to look at that and see what may be most appropriate for our neighborhoods in Peoria in terms of the volume of signs that would be acceptable to residents versus the desire of that particular group, so.
So do you mean the open house signs, excuse me, the open house signs for one open house? They could only have one sign?
Mayor Carlott, so with those resident right-of-way signs, that's where the number that we've proposed is four signs, four times per year, for four days at a time. So if someone were to have an open house, they could place four signs within the right-of-way at different entrances to their neighborhood to identify the location of their open house. They could be up there for four days, which is probably much longer than the open house would occur, and they could do that four times a year. There's no limitation on how close those could be together, so if they wanted to have four weekends back-to-back of open houses, they could certainly choose to do that. And in addition, it doesn't limit the number of activities or events that they would have. They could still have, you know, have more open houses or have more events. That type of signage is simply limited to the four times per year. So there are certainly other avenues they could choose. They're allowed to have signs in the yard, as we said, essentially continuously, so they could have a sign on the property. There would be other messaging avenues for them.
Okay, and they felt that the quantity was not enough, four times a year?
Correct. We did hear, and they expressed an interest for having additional signs and additional frequency. And that's where the balancing act really came in to see what would be, while they may desire a great number more, that may not be acceptable to our neighborhoods in terms of what they would see on a day-in, day-out basis. Because while there may be, that resident may be only selling their house once and having open houses, the neighbors living next door may experience everyone else having an open house. And that's a really concern that we had of the over-peripherally, peripherally, essentially just having far too many of these signs concentrated in residential areas.
What is our current ordinance for those kinds of signs?
So currently, if I can pull that up. So currently, you can see, it's based on the event. We would have those qualifying events, they could have the signs, they could still only have four per event, so it's consistent in terms of the number. And this, again, this is the regulation. There may be folks not following the rules currently, however, the current regulation would be consistent with four signs per activity.
So this one concerns me just a little bit because talking about it in terms of an event makes it seem similar to a yard sale or something like that, when in reality, this is a commercial business. So it's not similar to this sign, although it would be in a residential neighborhood, but it really is for a business purpose.
And Mayor Carlott, because these signs are being, essentially the right is being given to the property owner, and because we cannot look at the message, as long as the resident or their pointy, whether they allow someone to place a sign for them, we are not looking at the message itself. And a yard sale, while conducted by a residence, could be considered a commercial activity as well. So we did not want to differentiate based on commercial usage, and so that's where it gets a little bit tricky in terms of how do we regulate the sign without looking at it and without knowing what it's for or what it says. So this was essentially the compromise we were able to come to.
Mayor, can I ask, am I sensing that the four times per year is a little restrictive? Because right now, it's, I think, you can have as many, as many events as you want, it's probably unrestricted these days, today.
It's unrestricted right now.
Right, it just, you can, the timing is 48 hours prior to the event. We limit the number of signs, the size of the signs, and within the distance of the event, but right now, it's just, it's unrestricted today. So if you have 20 events a year, whether it's for sale or a garage sale or some other purpose, some other event rather, then it's unrestricted today.
So my concern is if you don't sell a house within this time restriction, you are not going to be able to place a sign out there, and that would impede somebody's business. I'm worried about that. So the four times a year, can there be an expansion on that that would allow people some more time?
Mayor, members of the council, if that's, we can certainly go back and look at that and maybe look to see if we could moderate that standard, if that's the wish of the council?
I think we should look at that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just follow, on that same vein, I don't see the four, I don't see, I see the four times per year, yes, absolutely. I don't see how long it can stay up under the proposed regulation, though. So four times per year, does that mean I can leave it up for 30 days? I don't see the four days max on here.
Councilmember Finn, this is just a summary of it, embedded within the code, within the regulation identifies the timeframe.
Okay.
All right, I just had one more comment. I really appreciate you taking into consideration small businesses and especially new businesses. In the past, you know, I think that that has fluctuated a little bit. We made some changes to the code during the economic downturn, and then we went back to our old, and, you know, we just want to make sure that we do everything that we can to make sure that our small businesses and new businesses succeed. And signs are a big way to do that, so I appreciate that. And thank you for all of the work that you have done on this, a year and a half, wow. It's huge, it's huge. So, yes, Councilmember Hunt?
And I really appreciate the times that you've come to the think tank and presented fragments and in-progress and allowed their input, and obviously, there are huge stakeholders in this since we're formulating our Old Town. And I love the part, I love all of this, actually, but I really love the parts that pertain to what will become Old Town's new look. And so thank you, I know how hard you've worked on it.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mayor and Council, and yes, we'll look at exploring the expansion on the frequency of the residential right-of-way signs. We'll ensure that we work with various stakeholders, such as WEAR, make sure that if there are any differences in interpretation, that that's clarified, and we'll begin the process of approval and making sure we're still shooting for, on October 17th, that it would be in front of you with that information, so we'll move on that. Thank you very much.
Perfect.
And that's all we have.
All right. Then we are adjourned until the 7:00 PM regular meeting. All right. Then we are adjourned until the 7:00 PM regular meeting. Peoria City Council meeting will now come to order. Please rise for a moment of quiet reflection and the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Binzbacher.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The clerk will please call the roll.
Mayor Carlat.
Here.
Vice Mayor Edwards.
Here.
Councilmember Patena.
Here.
Councilmember Binzbacher.
Here.
Councilmember Finn.
Here.
Councilmember Hunt. Councilmember Leonie.
Here.
Council liaison Acosta.
Here.
And council liaison Gattros.
Here.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the Peoria City Council meeting of September 19th, 2017. The first item on the agenda this evening is the consent agenda. And tonight's consent agenda includes items that require a public hearing. If there's any member of the public present who wishes to address a public hearing on the consent agenda, please complete a speaker request form and place it in the bin next to the speaker's podium. This item will be removed from consent and heard during the normal course of the regular agenda. Is there a member of the public who would like to address a public hearing on the consent agenda? All right. Seeing none, council, are there any items to be removed from consent? Do I have a motion?
Second.
A motion and a second. Please vote. And the consent agenda passes unanimously. We will now move on to new business. The first item is 18R public hearing, Cross of Glory Church Annexation, 101st Lane and Joe Max Road. Annexation of approximately 7.52 acres of privately owned property located south of the intersection of 101st Lane and Joe Max Road. Mr. Time.
Great. Thank you, Mayor and council. And Chris Hockes, our planning and community development director, will provide for this presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Good evening, Mayor and city council. Item 18R, this is a proposed annexation of approximately seven and a half acres filed on behalf of the Cross of Glory Lutheran Church. The church property is denoted on the screen in the hatched pattern. It's generally located at the corner of 102nd Avenue and Joe Max Road. It's immediately south of the Tierra del Rio development. And the county island that it's part of is the area in blue on the screen here. So in your agenda, Exhibit 3 is a letter from the church stating their interest in being part of the city of Peoria. One of the big reasons they cite in the letter are the shorter response times provided by our public safety personnel, police and fire. Additionally, the church states that as they intend to expand, they would like to connect to city sewers. So some of, those are some of the reasons they would like to join the city of Peoria community. What this graphic illustrates is the annexation process as detailed under state statute. Now, the Arizona state statute lays out all of the requirements of the annexation process. It requires a public hearing to be held within the first 30 days upon which we file a blank petition with the county recorder. So that's where we are tonight. We are required to hold a public hearing. So the purpose of tonight is not to take action on any annexation, take any input, answer questions. And so after the 30-day period ends, then we are free to release the blank petition. And in this case, we have, we have one year to collect the signatures to meet the annexation test. In this situation, we have one property owner. So I would expect that it would, we'd have got the signature pretty quickly and then place it on a future council agenda. As we looked at the annexation, it's in line with our annexation policy. It's in an area that the city can provide infrastructure. So without all taking any questions.
Thank you. Council, any questions? All right. Seeing none. Seeing none, I declare this public hearing closed. And this is a hearing only. There is no council action required this evening. So we will move on to 19R, also a public hearing. This is rezoning Hidden Paradise Estates, Planned Area Development, 79th Avenue and Williams Road. Mr. Time.
Great, thank you. And Mr. Hockes will again provide for this presentation.
Thank you. Item 19R, excuse me. This is a proposed rezone filed by Co. and Van Lou Consultants on behalf of the property owner. The property is denoted in red on the screen. It's approximately 78 gross acres in size. It's located along the New River Channel, near the corner of 79th Avenue and Patrick Lane. The request tonight is to rezone the property from single-family residential to a residential PAD or Planned Area Development. So that's a customized zoning district where the standards can be tailored to fit the context of an area. If successful, the proposal seeks to develop the property into a 114-lot single-family residential community. Now, as we look at the property context in greater detail, I'll go clockwise around it. Immediately to the north, there is vacant property, also the, what's called a Riverwalk Planned Development. It consists of lots that are proposed at 12,000, 18,000, and 35,000 square foot lots. That project is currently under final plat review right now with the city. To the east is a New River Corridor. Directly across from the New River Corridor is the city of Glendale and a development called Hillcrest. To the south is the existing Fletcher Heights community, the lots that are along that boundary, generally around 7,000 to 8,000 square feet in size. And then to the west, as you see denoted in the purple hashed pattern, is an existing Maricopa County Island. Lots in this area range from 1 to 3 acres in size. So in terms of larger access in the area, in a minute, I'll show you the development plan, the conceptual development plan. But what the development, what's important to look at on this screen in terms of context is, the development would be fed primarily from 77th Avenue. So you can see on the screen, on the center of the development, the north, that would be a roadway that would go by Riverwalk to Pinnacle Peak. Pinnacle Peak is a collector roadway on our general plan, and that takes people to a signalized intersection at 83rd Avenue and Pinnacle Peak. With regard to the property, there are a number of constraints on the property. The property is served by the Sunrise Water Company. There's a well site that exists at the far southwest corner of the property. Additionally, the Rock Springs Wash that comes from the north to intercept the property, it will be channelized and outlet to the New River Corridor. And finally, there is a 40-foot strip of land. It's Peoria right-of-way. It's a, it's actually an access utility and drainage easement, but it separates the Fletcher Heights community from the Hidden Paradise property. So as I talk about the development property, just keep that strip in mind, because that'll be a strip that the developer will be responsible for, and creating a trail corridor that will lead from these, this point out to the New River Trail Corridor. This graphic illustrates the current zoning in the area. The zoning is what somebody can do on their property today. So the property denoted in red, it's zoned R135. That's single-family residential. 35 signifies 35,000 square feet is the minimum lot size. So that's nearly an acre, almost an acre in size. In terms of the surrounding zoning districts, there's a mix of zoning and lot sizes in the area. The dark yellow you see, that's R118, 18,000 square feet. You see that to the northwest of the project. Directly to the north, you have a Directly to the north, you have a mix of R135 and also the Riverwalk PAD. I talked about lot sizes there between 12,000 and 35,000 square feet. To the east, the Hillcrest Ranch, 8,000 square foot lots. To the south, Fletcher Heights is also a Planned Area Development, and there's a mix of lot sizes throughout that development, but as indicated earlier, 7,000 to 8,000 square foot lot size in size. And then of course, the Maricopa County Island, zoned RU43, Rural 43 in the county, 1 acre is the minimum lot size there. Okay, this is the conceptual development plan. So while the PAD proposes a minimum lot size of 12,000 square feet, the plan actually proposes three lot sizes, and so they attempt to delineate those lot sizes by the different color variation here. So if you look at the screen, if you look at the dark brown that's along the New River Wash, those are the smallest lot sizes, those are 12,000 square foot minimum. If you look at the lighter brown in the center of the property, minimum lot size over there of 13,920 square feet. And then the larger lot sizes, which are the yellow, 18,000 square feet in size or half acre, and those are located along the north and west side of the project. So while 12,000 square feet is the minimum lot size, I should point out that the vast majority, 92%, are above 13,920 square feet. In terms of the access to the development, I mentioned earlier that 77th Avenue would be the primary access to this development, so it's going to be a question of timing with the Riverwalk development. If the Riverwalk development doesn't develop first, maybe there's some delay in the project and this project wants to move forward, they would be responsible for completing those improvements, the two-way roadway along 77th Avenue. They would also be responsible for the dry crossing over the Rock Springs Wash, so it's all a matter of timing for that. The secondary access, if you look at the development plan again, along where Patrick Lane, so the north, so the upper left-hand corner of the property, that's where Patrick Lane is, that would be a future secondary access. The issue with it being a secondary access now is, to make the geometry work, there isn't a right-of-way available, and so essentially when the property to the north develops, they will need to contribute some of the right-of-way to make that geometry work. But in the meantime, this area would be designated as a tract on the plat. It would be signed so that residents would understand that this would be a future right-of-way, and we would also collect the in-loop payment so at the time that that road is necessary, that construction of that roadway can be done. So we want to make it very clear to residents in this area that that will be a roadway in the future. And then finally, the emergency-only access, so if you look at the far lower-hand corner by the well site, that's going to be emergency access only to Williams Road. In terms of the open space, we have a very generous open space that's provided throughout the site. Overall, 28 acres or 36% of the entire site will be held in open space, that'll be a mix of natural open space and also usable or active open space areas. The open space that's cementized is primarily internalized within the project, there's a dog park, tot lot, I believe, and other amenities as well. The project also includes trail connections that provide access from the surrounding neighborhoods to the New River Channel. So as a matter of this development, not only would they have to provide the trail connection along the New River Channel, they would also have to provide a trail connection on the northern extent of the property that could accommodate pedestrian, bike, and equestrian traffic, but they would also be responsible for providing a trail along that, if you recall that 40-foot strip I talked about, they'd be responsible for providing a 10-foot trail within that strip, and responsibility for the maintenance on that too. Now, the Planned Area Development is based on the city's standard R112 zoning district. So what this graphic is just trying to point out, if you look at the items in bold, is just some of the differences between the standard district and the PAD that they're proposing. So I think some of the key things to point out here is that they're proposing a minimum lot width and a minimum lot depth that is larger and bigger than our standard district. So I think what the importance here is that it provides, I think, a more impactful presentation at the street line, so that's one thing to point out with some of the standards here. In terms of the analysis, so when we evaluate a rezon, we look to see that it conforms to the city's general plan. The property on the general plan is designated as a state residential, and that has a corresponding density of zero to two units per acre with a target density of one unit per acre. So in this plan, with the number of units that are requested, it will have a gross density of 1.47 units per acre, so it's within that range. You will note, it's a .47 increase above the target density. We always start the target density and hope to get additional open space, additional amenities above our minimum standards. I think we've achieved that here, there's a significant open space that's going to be provided, not only through the natural open space and the usable open space, but also, I think, with the enhanced buffer, particularly along the west side and the north side, but also some of the trail connections, not only within the project but off-project, and off-project meaning that 40-foot strip that's not their land, they will be providing a trail connection along that area. So I think that's important to point out. And then finally, the variation of lot sizes, although this PAD is based on the R112 district, as I indicated earlier, there will be a mix of lot size types within this development. I just think that it provides for a more diverse, interesting community. And so the staff finds that it is in conformance with our general plan. In terms of public outreach, we do require that we provide notification when the project comes in, and also prior to a neighborhood meeting, and also prior to notice of hearing. And based on the size of this property, we provide it to everyone within a quarter-mile radius. All the property owners would get a card, and also all registered HOEs within a one-mile radius. Now, this project has evolved for several years, it's gone through several evolutions on the plan, and I'll show you some of the evolution of that plan. We've had ongoing public interest on this project. Overall, when you look at the totality of the project, we've received one letter of opposition that was received a few years ago, back in 2015, that property owner wanted access along 79th Avenue. We did also receive earlier last year a letter of no objection, so that's not a letter of support, but it's not a letter of objection basically, it's a letter indicating that they're okay with the project, they don't support the project. And then we also received recently a letter from the PR Unified School District in support of the project, and that's included in your packet. Over the course of this project, there were two neighborhood meetings. First one was held on June 26, 2013, we had 12 attendees to that neighborhood meeting, and then a few years later, there was another neighborhood meeting, and we had eight attendees at that meeting. When we talk about the concerns that we've heard through the life of the project, the traffic on Patrick Lane and Williams Road have been big concerns. There were concerns from, particularly from Fletcher Heights with Williams Road, there was concerns about cut-through traffic through that neighborhood, there's also been concerns about Patrick Lane, about the traffic there. So the project, again, I'll show you in a minute, has evolved greatly. So the way this development is situated, that the primary access will be through 77th, it'll take you to a collector, which will take you to a signalized intersection at 83rd. The Williams Road again, that was a chief concern, that's no longer an access point. I think the existence of the well site made it difficult anyway to provide access, so it's now just emergency access only. There was also concern about the increase in the school population, and as I indicated momentarily, that we did receive a letter of support from the district. The developer has reached out to the district, and they have worked out the terms of a developer assistance agreement with the district. There are also concerns about two-story homes along the southern boundary. The development that we've showed here is a mix of one-story and two-story homes. Fletcher Heights community, some of the neighbors had those concerns, that is a community of one- and two-story homes as well along the boundary. What I will point out is that the 40-foot, that 40-foot strip of right-of-way that does provide separation, not only will be a landscaped strip, but it does provide separation from any future home sites to the existing Fletcher Heights community, so it provides about 70 feet of separation when you consider all the setbacks in that strip. And then we had some comments about just a general preference scenario to have larger lot sizes. So you know, there has been a reduction in lot count from the first iteration, which proposed 175 lots, we're 114 today. The lots have also increased in size, the initial version we saw was less than 8,000 square feet, now the smallest lot size will be 12,000 square feet, and as indicated, most will be actually near 14,000 square feet in size. So I'm going to show you some of the iterations, this one didn't come out too well, but the project evolved over a four-year period, and we went through seven reviews, and the plan, it's significantly evolved on the basis of not only the staff comment, but all the neighborhood feedback that it received over that time. As I indicated, the number of lots, they've decreased from 175 to 114. The density has been reduced from 2.3 units per acre to what it is today, 1.47 units per acre. The minimum lot size, as I indicated, has increased. We also have a mix of lot sizes now, with the largest lot sizes now situated along the northern and western reaches where it's adjacent to the, and provides a better transition to the larger lot community to the west in the county island. We've also removed the Williams Road connector in favor of 77th, providing the main access point. The open space has also greatly increased, the initial usable or active open space was 9%, it's now 17%. And also, you know, we believe that with all the evolution of the process, that we have a better plan in front of you, so I'll show you over the years, the evolution of the plan. So this is how it was initially submitted, there was revision here, this shows you some of the changes. Continue to evolve, and here we are today, so this is the latest iteration in place, and so that iteration responds to all the things I just enumerated for you. Now, one of the things that was... It went to Planning and Zoning Commission, we had a public hearing on September 7th. At that public hearing, there were three speakers from the general public in opposition. The comments that we heard at that public hearing was that they believed the plan did not provide for any combination for horse trails, as I indicated, that northern trail along the northern part of the project would have both a soft and a concrete trail, which could accommodate equestrian traffic to the New River. There were also concerns about the density, whereas the respondents were appreciative of the evolution of the plan, I think they would just rather see larger lot sizes in the area. Concerns of traffic along Patrick Lane and impact to schools. At that public hearing, we also received eight speaker request forms, the respondents did not wish to speak in that case, and then after deliberation, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended unanimous approval of this case. What I do want to point out to the council tonight, we passed out, I believe, the ordinance to you today, that's the ordinance as recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission. The ordinance in your packet doesn't contain two of the changes that were introduced to the commission. So if you look at the screen, Item 7 and Item 8, those were the changes that were introduced to the commission at their public hearing, they're minor changes to it, they're just to try to improve the clarity of those stipulations, but the way you see 7 and 8 in blue, that's the way it's reflected in your ordinance that we've passed out, and that will be the recommendation from the staff tonight. Some of the key findings, we believe the PAD is in conformance with the goals and objectives of the general plan, we believe it's consistent with the estate density residential land use category, that will result in a development that is compatible with the neighborhoods in the area, and the developer has entered into a developer assistance agreement with the PR Unified School District. And so with that, the city is recommending that the council concur with the Planning and Zoning Commission and approve the rezon of 77 gross acres from single-family to a Planned Area Development, subject to conditions 1 to 21, and as I indicated, the rules of by 7 and 8. Without, I'll take any questions.
Thank you. Council, are there any questions for Mr. Hockes? Vice Mayor?
Thank you Mayor. Chris, can you bring up the slide with the layout between the Fletcher Heights and the new, right there, the one before was fine.
Would that work?
So the trail, the 40-foot section that separates the two communities, that's going to be maintained by the new property, the new development, is that correct?
Correct, that's correct.
Okay. Will it be lit, or is it... My concern is that it's a breezeway, it'll be a walkway, I want to make sure that it's not lit so that if it's, you know, with the neighbors right 40 feet away, that we have lights that are, you know, 50, 60 feet high, they're now shining in residents' backyards. And then also on both sides of the opening, are there ballards or anything to eliminate ATV access so that it's not a breezeway to, you know, to get out to the riverbed where a lot of the ATVs go out riding?
Vice Mayor Edwards, that's a great question. If I could address the lighting, first of all, I believe it's the intent that not only would be a trail corridor, but also landscaped. 40-foot, we don't want it to become a long, dark area that's unsafe, so typically the practice is that we would work with the developer to install low-level landscape lighting that wouldn't impact neighbors, but also would provide the given lighting. That coupled with the, you know, I believe there's view fencing, if you look at the fencing plan, I believe there's view fencing where the open space is, to provide a little window into that area so it doesn't become that dead area. And then as far as the ballards, I believe it's the intent to keep the trail open for pedestrians and bike traffic, I'm not aware of any ballards that have been discussed as part of that, but...
It's just something they may want to look at, because I know in the Fletcher Heights, just in the housing right below here in Fletcher Heights, they have an access to the trail right there that's kind of in your gray area, and they had to put in ballards to stop ATV traffic from the community going out to the riverbed. So that would be my only concern, is to eliminate the free access of ATVs or, you know, small vehicles. But I do want to commend you and the property owner, the amount of revisions from where you started, you know, four years ago, because I've been involved from this day one, the amount of work that you and your staff and the developer have put into this is amazing. To go from 175 to 114 homes really shows the interest in all parties to really keep the density to manageable, and I really commend all of you for doing that. So I do support this. Thank you Mayor.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I have a couple, Chris. The Patrick Lane roadway, the entrance and exit that's going to be constructed there, do you have any idea how many homes will be constructed by the time that is open?
Mayor Carlet, members of the council, so the Patrick Lane secondary access isn't dependent on the number of homes, it will depend when the vacant property to the north develops, because there isn't enough land on this property with the geometry that's required to accommodate that full right-of-way width, so it will require land on the property to the north when it develops. So having said that, we still want this area to be dedicated as a tract, there will be a physical barrier so that it can't be used in the meantime until it's a full right-of-way, it'll be signed appropriately, and then, but at the time that that happens, that will be when that roadway is constructed.
My concern is that all of these homes could be constructed prior to there being a second way to get in and out of this neighborhood, and by that time, it's probably not going to be acceptable to the people who live in these homes. So is there a way to specify a time, or say that they have to buy that right-of-way from the other owner prior to them developing, or can any kind of timeline be put on that?
Mayor Carlet, members of the council, this might be one perhaps where the applicant might want to address it, I believe they've attempted to buy some of that additional property to make that geometry work, and they have not been successful, but that may be something they want to address.
Are they here this evening?
Good evening, I'm Doug Chubin with Coen Van Loue. We're located at 4550 North 12th Street in Phoenix.
Thank you.
In regards to the property to the north of us, we have had correspondence and discussion with them, they were hesitant to allow us to purchase a portion of their land, they required that we would have to buy all of it, and that entire parcel is not really helpful for us in this particular development plan.
Okay, so is there a secondary option, like maybe using the fire access and having that open for a time?
It's our understanding that the southwest access towards Williams is only for the purposes of emergency vehicles.
I see that. What can we do to make it so that there is more than one way to get in and out of this neighborhood for what could be a long, long period of time? Do you need to call your lifeline?
I might need to call a lifeline here. I do need to phone a friend.
Good evening Mayor and Council. We have looked at the traffic study in depth, and because of the number of lots, we are confident that having one access in and out is not going to be an issue. The secondary access with emergency access, we are comfortable with that if a tree were to fall, or there was an accident at the main access, we would still be able to get people out of the neighborhood.
Okay, so having been through a number of new developments...
Yes.
I am very fully aware that after a very short period of time, maybe one or two years, people do not feel that having one way in and out of their neighborhood is sufficient.
Right, Chris had also mentioned putting up a sign that states it is a future access location, limiting the landscaping in that location so that they don't get the feeling that it is a landscaped area. So I think we... So I think we have, did we do a DG path or some kind of stabilized path so it looks more like a roadway from the beginning? That's what we had talked about.
So you're going to to do a DG path so it looks like a roadway?
A stabilized roadway. So it kind of you see the extent of what it's going to look like.
People will drive on it, you know.
We'll have something up. We'll have ballards up, and we'll have a gate up so that they cannot drive through it till it's constructed.
Vice Mayor?
Is it possible, Mayor, that maybe the city get in negotiations with the property owner to the north to purchase that little piece?
Have we attempted?
To do a little leverage there.
We can reach out to the neighbors and see what they think. If they are not amenable, then we would have to come back and discuss condemnation with you and see if that is something you would want to explore further.
So it's the curvature of this road onto Patrick that does not allow it to to stay within its own property boundaries?
We only have half-street improvements on 79th Avenue and on Patrick Lane. So we have minimal amount of pavement we're connecting into, so we cannot make the angles work safely to provide exiting and enter through that location right now.
In a perfect world, you couldn't. So I'm just wondering, you know, I I'm sorry to to just continue with this point, but I know that it could be years before that property develops to the north, and it is going to be unacceptable for these residents to only have one way in and one way out for many years. I think that we need to look at a solution, look at alternatives, look to find a way that that these residents can be happy long after our developer is gone. I'm not saying that we need to hold up approval on this this evening, but I would like to include a stipulation that that becomes a part of our vote this evening. I have one more, one more thing, and that is the streets. Now, maybe maybe I'm just looking at something that is, you know, not static and how it's going to be developed, but these streets are just straight. If they don't meander, they don't wind, they don't prevent speeding on them. We are eventually going to have to go in and put speed bumps on these because the neighbors will complain that their other neighbors, not them, their other neighbors are going too fast on the street because it's too straight. Is there a possibility of putting some variation in there with those streets?
Mayor Carlott, members of the council, so concurrently with the rezone, we've also been looking at the preliminary plat. And so and and one of the things we look at is our design review manual that has specifies standards for subdivision layout. And I believe the the block links were such that it did not require the meander. But certainly, I know we are in advanced stage in the plat review, but perhaps that's something we can go back and look at and see if there's way to introduce either a gentle meander or perhaps a choker or some other type of measure to to slow some of those speeds down as you suggested.
Okay. All right. I would really appreciate that being included in this. Thank you. Sir, did you have anything else that you wanted to offer?
No, I'm here at your discretion.
All right. So this is a public hearing, and I declare this public hearing open. Is there a member of the public who would like to address this issue? All right, seeing none, I declare the public hearing closed. Counsel, any further discussion? Do we have a motion?
I'll motion, but I'd like to with the stipulations of the as discussed here with the road curvatures and the possibility of the working with the property owner to the north, however you want to word that.
Finding any other any other way to for ingress and ingress into this property other than just one way?
Okay.
Did you? Did you? Are you okay with the way we?
Mayor Carlott, just so I understand properly, so the 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 motion tonight is on the additional stipulation is, as I understand, is for the city and the developer to cooperative look at a means to provide secondary access prior to the development of the property to the north. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
That is correct. And and the streets, can you look at some kind of variation for the the streets other than just straight?
Sure.
Okay. So then we have a motion and a second with those stipulations. Counsel, please vote. And it passes unanimously. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is call to the public for non-agenda items, and I do have two speaker request forms. If you wish to address the city council, please complete a speaker request form and place it in the bin next to the speaker's podium. So I would like to call on Liz Riches. Richie.
Liz Rakia, I'm the Governor Affairs Director for WEMAR, the West Maricopa Association of Realtors. Is there anything more joyous than seeing balloons and streamers leading up a path to a children's birthday party or seeing a big welcome home banner for a member of the military who's coming home? Well, we love these sites, and we think probably you do too. But as we read the sign ordinance that is proposed, it appears that these and other signs may be prohibited, even blue and gold star banners hung in a window. So WEMAR questions the necessity for government to prohibit and prohibit and even regulate signs of joy and sorrow and pride by members of the community. We appreciate the provision for temporary signage at the entrance of a neighborhood, but are concerned it's not adequate signage for the task. Whether the signage is for an open house, a garage sale, a moving in the park, or other event, a sign at the entrance simply directs traffic into the neighborhood. While there's a provision for resident right-of-way signs, the wording limits its use because of the word adjacent to the property. And with that, it effectively renders that unusable. We suggest allowing a sign at each location a logical turn would provide for you to efficiently get to your location. We're concerned about small business located in secret shopping centers, industrial centers, or other multi-building complexes. These businesses are dependent on signage at the entrance so they can be seen. So think about going down Thunderbird and at your Thunderbird and 83rd Avenue, and you're trying to locate a small business within one of those complexes. It's very difficult, if not impossible. We question the compelling government interest in regulating helpful signage inside a multi-building complex, such as a retail, industrial, or multifamily complex or other commercial center. Multiple stores and multiple buildings with faces that face in different directions may require more signage on the face of the building or directional signage within that complex in order to efficiently direct traffic and provide a location. We appreciate Table 4A being amended, and we believe limited signage to the outside the visual triangle will help reduce the concerns for too many signs at corners. We request the proposed ordinance be amended to allow condo owners, apartment owners, and other property owners with no access to a front yard to post their for-sale or for-lease signs within their windows so that it can be visible to passersby. In our written remarks, we outlined our suggestions for wording table headers so that all property owners may be allowed to post for-sale and for-lease signs. WEMAR is concerned about signage being adequate, visible, and legible. We support the signs of the visual arc as far as helping you determine minimum signage. Property owners and agents and agents trying to direct traffic into areas where we have little traffic going now, so think about trying to direct a house, open house to someplace like West Wing or Vistancia or even to the 6,500 homes that have yet to be built, we need to have access to the right-of-way. We appreciate the time that staff has taken in order to simplify this sign ordinance, and we are pleased that they have taken into consideration not only our remarks, but other stakeholders. You all have received copies of our written remarks. If you would like any clarification or have any questions, please feel free to email or phone me, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. And we have one more request to speak, and it is from Susan Nicholson.
Good evening. I'm Susan Nicholson. I'm the Planning Director with the West Valley Women's Council of Realtors Network. I'm here also to discuss the sign ordinances. Upon review, our board came together of the draft that has been put out to the public, and we did have several concerns. Our first concern was, and Mayor is so happy to hear you point this out, four open houses per year. So four open houses per year, sometimes the first Realtor who's hired to do the job doesn't get it done. That property could be vacant. The owner of the property could be out of state. It could be a Canadian owner. We don't know necessarily where that person would live. And that first Realtor may have held those four open houses. Two months later, the second Realtor takes the job, doesn't know about the first four open houses. The owner didn't know about the first four open houses. I don't know if you'll have a public record database or something that we'll be able to check so that we're not in violation. Second Realtor does an open house and boom, you're fined, just like that. We're small business owners, each one of us Realtors. So we hang our license with a big brokerage like Remax, but we're very much small business owners, and those kind of things can be crushing to a little tiny budget when you're just starting out, especially for newer agents. So we had some concerns about that. Also, the length of time to sell a listing and four open houses also came into concern for us. So when we have a house in Peoria that's listed for $250,000, it's very, very likely that we're going to sell that house very, very quickly. And four open houses is great because I could hold it open every day that it was on the market. So that's not a problem. When I have a $750,000 house up in Cibola Vista, which some people don't even know is Peoria, and I'm trying to direct traffic up there and get it up there, there's just not as many people that can afford a $750,000 house, and that homeowner is going to be seriously disappointed when their Realtor says, "I'm sorry, I can only hold your house open four times in a calendar year." So in our opinion, in our profession, it's something that's grossly unfair to property owners who own a more expensive property. The four directional signs. So we also are very concerned about the word adjacent that is in there. It doesn't do me any good as a Realtor to have a sign at the opening of a neighborhood to say, "Open house," and then have three more signs on the property. Here! There were five or eight turns to get here, and so if the person can actually find my open house, they're going to walk in and think I'm an idiot. So we would like to have a sign available to us everywhere where the car has to turn in order to get us there. I'd like to use Hidden Paradise Estates as an example since you just reviewed it. With the way that it's currently written, if someone buys a house on Patrick, they're good. I can hold an open house for them, at least four, right? But if they buy on Daly or Williams, then the buyer has to go hunting for me because I don't have, even if you do allow me to use the four signs not adjacent to the property, I don't have enough signs to get that buyer to the actual house that I've listed. And the last thing that we, as the Women's Council, wanted to bring up to to do was the no signs in windows. Many times, your first property owners, the people who are just getting that American dream in their hands, they own condos, they own patio homes, they're just starting out, and they don't own property in front of their house to stick a sign in. So they rely on being able to tell the public that their home is for sale by placing a sign in their window. That's all their HOA will allow them to do. So if you take away their ability to put a for-sale sign in their window, you grossly take away their marketability compared to a single-family residential homeowner. So thank you so much for considering those concerns from my Realtor community. We appreciate your time and all of your work on this. Have a good night.
Thank you. Thank you to both of our speakers. We are unable to reply in this situation this evening, but I assure you that all of your comments are being noted. All right. We will now move on to reports from the city manager. Mr. Tyne?
Great. Thank you, Mayor and Council. We have one presentation we wanted to go through and then just a couple of comments after that. But as we've discussed in recent council meetings, drowning prevention really continues to be of the utmost priority to this organization, and any and all steps that we can do to avert these tragedies is something that we continue to explore. We wanted to showcase some some very good news of what's happened recently, and we have John Sefton, our Community Services Director, to show a little bit of the outreach that we've done here in the community.
Thank you, Mr. Tyne, and good evening, Mayor and Council. I truly appreciate the opportunity to share yet one more accolade for the city of Peoria. Just a few Fridays ago, the Community Services Team in the Rio Vista Recreation Center hosted the Drowning Prevention Coalition of Arizona's annual awards breakfast, and I'm proud to share that the city of Peoria was nominated and selected as the 2017 Corporate Award winner. The DPCA is a community-based organization comprised of parents, health and safety professionals, and business leaders. The organization exists to provide a forum to prevent fatal and non-fatal drownings through the promotion of education, legislative action, and enhanced product safety. And we have a quick video to demonstrate the award. Christian Peck as they too were nominated for awards because of their diligent, professional, and ever-consistent great work in promoting drowning prevention. And as you saw in the video, their work in programming the aquatics facilities, 9,000 swim lessons in a summer. It's impactful. And as you all know, this issue is very much a team effort. Peoria's police, fire, medical personnel are all leaders in supporting the aquatic safety initiatives. In fact, Chief Mentor will host the Drowning Prevention Coalition's president, Melissa Sutton, at his upcoming United Community Action Network, and we applaud all of the the team in making these type of accolades possible. And thank you.
Thank you. Something we can all be very, very proud of. Thank you for your efforts.
Great. Thank you, John. Just a couple of other quick items. One, we have fire and medical personnel who are back from their assignment in Texas after the aftermath of Hurricane Irma. They returned back safely after doing just a stellar job. And Chief Reese at our next meeting will provide you a little more information with regard to that. Lastly, I just wanted to take a moment to express the sadness of all of us and the loss of Brent Maddingley. Brent passed away unexpectedly on September 9th. Brent served the residents of Peoria for over 20 years, 10 of those as our chief financial officer. And over the years, Peoria has gained a stellar reputation for its financial management, and the stability that it's brought, we've enjoyed over the years as largely a result of Brent's strong leadership. And even beyond our borders, Brent's reputation is extraordinary. He served as president of the state's financial association, testified numerous times at the Arizona Legislature, and has acted as a mentor to officials all throughout neighboring jurisdictions here in the state. And internally, of course, he was extremely well-liked and an approachable colleague, and we will miss him dearly. I just wanted to make those comments. And thank you, Mayor. That's all I have.
Thank you for those words. Appreciate it so much. He will definitely be missed. We will now move on to reports from city council, and we will start with Youth Council Liaison Acosta.
First, I would like to send my condolences to Brent's family. They are here. I'm very sorry for your loss. I would also like to congratulate the drowning prevention for all the work that they have done and for our youth and for our city and for everyone that they have taught. Sorry, that really hit me. And about hurricane, the hurricane that happened in Hurricane Harvey, there's been a lot of hurricanes. The youth council has actually been talking about starting a fundraiser to send items over to Hurricane Harvey over there in Texas. We still haven't decided what we want to send, but that is all that I've got.
Thank you. Councilmember Patana?
Thank you, Mayor. On September 7th, 2017, I had the opportunity to go to a program where the police and firefighters were reunited with the Green family. If you didn't hear, on August 1st, two-year-old Gideon Green was at home with his mother when a carrot became lodged in his throat. The mother, who was right next to the child the whole time, watched this incident occur, quickly dialed 911, and tried to dislodge the blockage. Unfortunately, she was unable to remove the airway blockage, and the child fell unconscious and unresponsive. And can you imagine as a parent going through that? I, I think it would just be horrible. First on the scene were two Peoria police officers who immediately began CPR until Peoria Fire and Medical Paramedics arrived. Paramedics were able to remove the blockage and began breathing for the child and working to revive him. Peoria paramedics continued their life-saving efforts in the ambulance while rushing Gideon to Banner Hospital. Gideon arrived at the hospital still unresponsive and not breathing. Doctors continued to work diligently to save his life, and in an almost miraculous save, doctors were finally able to revive young Gideon and amazingly, who was released from the hospital over a week later and has made a full recovery and suffered no long-term effects. Teamwork was the key to this amazing save. Each link in the chain of the first response was critical to the positive outcome. Without the dispatcher, the police on scene, firefighter, paramedics, and hospital care, the results may have been completely different. Both Peoria Police and Fire's quick response, Tyne, made a critical difference in the treatment. Our firefighters and our police get top-notch training every year, and this is one of the reasons that we give them such good training is because it took a cooperation between all of these people to save Gideon's life. I saw him come into the, into the room, and he was like any typical two-year-old boy, bouncing around and having a lot of fun and laughing and sitting on his dad's lap. And Gideon will now have a chance to live a happy and full life because of what happened on that particular day. So congratulations to our first responders and obviously the hospital staff, staff who helped revive Gideon. Like Jeff said, everyone was saddened by Brent Mattingly's unexpected passing. Everybody knows how important Brent was to the city and everything that he accomplished. I knew Brent for the 20 years that he was with the city. Brent was always quick to smile, easy to talk to, and genuinely just a great person to be around, and he will certainly be missed. I think most of us are not going to miss Brent because of the employee he was, they're going to miss Brent because of the friend that he was. My thoughts and prayers go out to Brent's, Brent's family. And lastly, every week, we hear on television about children drowning. I'd like to say congratulations to our Community Services Department on their award for drowning prevention. Peoria provides so many programs and swim lessons to prevent drownings. 9,000 swim lessons occurred this summer. That's 9,000 children that are probably are not going to drown in somebody, in their backyard swimming pool. The other great thing that makes Peoria so, so good in this is that they can get their lessons either free or very, very affordable. So once again, congratulations to the Community Services Department on a job well done. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Binsbacher?
Thank you, Mayor. I love that story about reuniting police and fire with that toddler. I was not there to see it, but it doesn't always work out that way, that you get to see the end result or the outcome or how is a patient doing. And so to be able to experience that is fantastic. I'm happy for all of you, and I hope that you'll let that serve as a reminder as to how incredibly important the work that you do is to our community, for our city. We're so grateful for what you do, and I'm just, I'm glad you got to experience that positive outcome. Congratulations to Community Services and your recognition on the award that you received for your effort on drowning prevention. Councilmember Patena mentioned the, the numbers are astounding, but that is such a huge part of a remarkable summer program that is offered, and the impact is tremendous and the work that goes into it is tremendous. So, well done. And as we have all said, my condolences to the Mattingly family. My condolences to all of you, to staff, the leadership team, the department, all of those that worked closely with Brent. His impact was tremendous, and he would be so proud of all of you because you are doing such a remarkable job keeping it all together and doing the best you can to honor him by continuing on and honoring and respecting his legacy. So again, you make us all proud. It's been a tough, tough week. I'm proud of all of you, and thank you for what you've been doing and working through. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Edwards?
Thank you, Mayor. Very well said. This morning, I attended a SALT conference with Chief Mentor, and I just want to thank the members of the Police Department for attending that meeting. It was very well attended by the senior residents of the community. I just want to thank Chief and the members of letting the residents know that they're there for, you're there for them, and giving them a lot of good information on how to keep themselves safe, keep their property safe, and things to look out for when they're out shopping and kind of out of their element. It was, I think, a real eye-opener for some of those residents because they, they live in a gated community and they have a lot of concierge at the, at the service there. But when they're outside that development, things do happen. And so I think you really reminded them of, of their surroundings and be mindful of what's going on in their surroundings, you know, carrying a purse or just taking their groceries out to the car, that, you know, there are predators out there. And so, just for the senior community out there, if you didn't get an opportunity to attend it, I know that the Chief has some of those planned in the future, and I just really highly recommend that you attend one of those SALT conferences. And as Bridgette said, we're all saddened by Brent's passing, and, and staff has done a phenomenal job of, of keeping it together. No one's going to be able to fill Brent's shoes. He was a friend and a colleague and a mentor to a lot of us. And so, you know, his legacy is going to live on for a long time within the city of Peoria, there's no doubt about that. And I send condolences to his, his family and to the, the colleagues that, that worked with him day in and day out, that who knew him better than, than we did. It is a huge loss, but take comfort that you guys are all together and can comfort each other in these days ahead. So that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just add to the statements about Brent. I, I knew Brent for 14 years, and in all that time, I don't think I ever saw him without a smile and a kind word. I think kind would be one of the main words I would use to describe him. Also brilliant and able to work things out with budget that we thought were impossible. He's left a legacy here with the city, and also personally, he has left a wonderful wife and two boys that I know are going to make their mark in the world. They're wonderful young men, and they had a great relationship with their father, so I know that they will grow up to be just like him. And that's really all I have for tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Leonie?
Yes, thank you. Just want to mention that Saturday, we had the Park Fest at Country Meadows. It was great. Over 300 people was there, and we gave, the city gave away four bikes. And I just want to thank the police force, the fire department, the lights that come down with their trucks and show it off, and all the volunteers that worked that night, and especially my assistant, Karen, who set everything up. And when she goes to those things, she's the boss. She tells me what to do. So I just want to say thank, thank you to everybody that was in that, involved in that Park Fest. I also want to say that on October 14th, we're going to have a shredathon at Sun Valley School. So if you want to give it to those big numbers in your name, come on down and tune them in, and they'll shred them for you. Thank you. God bless you and have a great day.
Thank you. Youth Council Liaison Gastros?
Thank you, Mayor. On Wednesday, September 13th, I attended a teen focus group at Rio Vista. The teens got to put in their input on upcoming events and help plan future upcoming events. I would also like to send my condolences to Brett and congratulate our Community Services on their award about drowning prevention. On Sundays, I work at the main Peoria Public Library, and a few weeks ago, it was temporarily shut down due to the new comfy furniture that has been remodeled. I think that it looks good and nice, and when you guys ever get the chance, come out and visit. I too attended the Park Fest on Saturday. It was such an amazing event. So, thank you.
Thank you. I would also like to say my condolences to Brent's family. He will be dearly missed, and, you know, I know many of you have heard us talking about the principles of sound financial management. We've talked about how that got us through the economic downturn in such a healthy financial way. Those were brought to us by Brent Mattingly. So you can see the quality of his work and how far-reaching it really was. And he left us with something. Tonight, in our consent agenda, we voted on a refinancing of our transportation tax revenue bonds, and he saved us $4 million. That happened tonight on our consent agenda, and Brent, thank you for that. And with that, we are adjourned.